The next item on the agenda of public hearings, we actually have three public hearings tonight. And we'll have a presentation from staff and then from an applicant if they choose to make a presentation. And then we'll hear from any interested public members. You have five minutes to comment. The first item on the agenda is the Howdy Pub Dog daycare at 1482 67th Street. Maru, I guess that's your project.
Good evening, Commissioner. This is an amendment to use permit for a doggy daycare facility, which the commission approved at the June 2006 meeting. It was a use permit to establish about a 9,600 square feet of dog daycare facility in an existing warehouse building. Because it involved a change in use from warehouse to dog daycare center, it triggered traffic impact fees. The traffic impact fee ordinance allows an applicant to protest the fees to the city council. In this case, the applicant did protest, did file a protest to the council, and the council heard that protest on August 1st meeting. At the time, at the council hearing, the applicant proposed two measures, which she said that would reduce the number of peak hour trips that her facility would generate. First was provision of a free shuttle service for 20 dogs. And second proposal was provision of significant discounts to clients who would participate in dog pool. The commission, the council heard the two proposals and directed that the use permit be referred back to the commission to incorporate the two proposals as conditions of approval and for the staff to recalculate the fees as a result of the proposals and how they would reduce the total number of peak hour trips. So that's what's in front of you today, an amendment which says, which basically incorporates the two proposals. And these have been introduced in the conditions of approval, and they've been underlined in the report. The building staff recalculated the traffic impact fees, and the fees were reduced by about 40 percent. It comes now to a little over $13,400. With that, staff recommends approval for the amendment to the permit. And if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer it.
Questions? I did, the background to, page two of the staff report references the two proposals, but they weren't, they were presented orally to the council. They weren't attached to our staff report. Were the proposals written out? Or was it just in something that was presented orally?
It was just, proposals were written out in a piece of paper and given to me by the applicant.
Okay.
So it doesn't say anything more than what the staff report says.
Okay. Thanks, Maru. Would the applicant like to make a presentation to the commission? Can you state your name and?
Good evening. I'm Crystal Para, owner of Howdy Pub. I just want to say that we've definitely looked at several options for reducing the traffic impact. And I'm well on my way to procuring the shuttle bus that will be able to have a capacity of 20 dogs. And I think that that in conjunction with the carpool or doggy pool, as we're going to call it, and the incentives that that will provide will definitely lead to the desired traffic impact, as we've stated.
So just for clarification, are you looking at one bus that's going to take 20 dogs at a time? Or are you going to do back and forth van shuttle?
I'm going to adjust it to the needs of the customers. But the bus will have a dog capacity of 20 dogs at one time. They will be properly transported in kennels, two to a kennel, or in freestanding type of accommodations where they wear, basically, I don't know if any of you guys have dogs, but they wear the equivalent of a harness that is like a seatbelt. So they won't have much room to wiggle around, and they'll be safely transported.
Would the service be offered throughout the day? Or would it be morning and evenings, like drop off in the morning and pick up in the evening?
Yeah, just during our designated pick up and drop off times. There's a period during the day where it's a quiet zone for the dogs. And we don't allow drop offs or pickups unless there's an emergency pre-approved type of situation. But other than that, no.
What's a dog pool?
It's the same as a carpool, but with dogs. So if one-
Do dogs take turns driving?
No, but-
Their parents do.
The dog parents. If they arrive with more than one dog in their vehicle, that's considered a dog pool.
Oh, they get a discount?
Yes, they get a discount.
What if they have two dogs at home? They would do that anyway.
Right, yeah, effectively, that's right. And so basically what it is is a multi-dog discount, but the dogs have to arrive together.
Is this something you've done before? Is this a standard procedure with dog care facilities?
I think that the shuttle service is not standard procedure, but it is becoming something that is more popular. This area, especially with the traffic on the 80 during peak commute hours, which is when people would be dropping off or picking up, I think would be some, a service that would be appreciated by customers. Mostly, the standard is to actually charge for the shuttle service, but we will be providing it for free.
And what would be the earliest that the shuttle would start? I know that there's a dog walker in my building, and she shuttles around, picks up all the dogs. And the complaint I've heard is that the car parks, and there's 10 dogs in the van, and they're all barking their heads off for five, 10 minutes while she runs in and gets another dog.
Well, the idea is that we're not going to, well, I still have to figure out the specifics. Not having any customers right now, it's hard for me to say where I'm going to do the drop off and pick up. But the idea would be that I'd have, the business is only open from 7:00 to 7:00, so it would probably start at 7:00 AM. Where the, we would either go to a specific location and ask owners to come and drop off at that location, where it's already an acceptable location for dogs, like a dog park or, you know, the front lobby of an apartment complex or something, where it's not like right in the face of the residents of that building. I'm going to do my best not to have that situation happen. Another idea that's been tossed around is potentially targeting some BART stations, where we are encouraging people to take public transportation by allowing them to bring their dogs to the BART station, drop them off, and proceed to take public transportation, which is why I don't take public transportation, because my dog can't go on BART.
So the genesis of this is a one-time saving of a part $9,000, is that right?
Yeah, basically.
And it, but it's going to cost you more than $9,000 just to provide this service, I would think.
Well, it's going to cost me more than $9,000 to buy a shuttle, yes.
And operate it.
And operate it, yeah. So, yeah, it is.
But you think it's necessary for your business to have the shuttle?
Yeah, I think that, well, not necessarily necessary, but it's something where if I'm going to be investing in my business, it's something where I would want to invest in. It would have been nice to do it later, but sooner is probably fine.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing.
I just have one question of staff. Is there any precedence for this?
For recalculation of fees?
Yeah.
Not in my time. I don't know if Charlie has seen something.
Didn't we just have a, we at least had an appeal to the fee for the furniture-
There was, yeah.
-store on 66?
Oh, that wasn't on the traffic impact fee.
But Chevron gas station.
The Chevron gas station. Certainly, there is a change, whether we've had a precedent of changing the conditions of approval to reduce the traffic demand, not precisely. But the, certainly the appeal process allows the applicant to demonstrate that their use won't generate that number of car trips, and then the council can make what conditions they'd like to make sure that that's accurate and reduce the fee, so.
Is there any program to monitor the, this van that's going to be replacing the fees?
Well, not on an ongoing basis. We don't really have a mechanism for that.
It would be complaint-driven more than-
Typically, conditions of approval are complaint-driven. No?
Well, yeah, I accept those that are tied to the issuance of a building permit or a certificate of occupancy. I think we would want to have proof that the van had been purchased before we gave a certificate of occupancy. But other than that, it'll be an ongoing condition.
Can we add that as a condition?
What?
That it's been purchased and?
Sure, we can include that as, I mean, there is a-
First of all, I'd like to say I think this is a great use of traffic impact, of $8,000 in traffic impact fees. If this keeps 10 or 15 cars a day from coming into Emeryville, I think it's a great use for those fees.
I think in addition to the proof of the shuttle itself, I would like to also have proof of a program, a transportation program, or how they're going to structure this pickup. And it appears right now the applicant hasn't worked out those details, and that could make a big difference in terms of how this program is operated. So I think we need, staff needs to see what the program would be.
So essentially, in the first condition of approval, let's see, I guess this would be Roman numeral one, capital A, little one, little a, and then four and five under that. Those are the two new conditions. After both of those, we would say we want to see proof of purchase of the van and proof of the development of the program prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
I agree with Paul that it's a good use of funds if an applicant can find alternative ways of having drop off and pick up. But I know that at my building, 93 units, there's 42 dogs in that building, and there's two dog walking services that run out of there. And both of them shuttle these dogs around. There don't seem to be anything near the size of this facility. But probably half of those people walk or bart to work. So if they had to put the dog in the car, head over to Howdy Pub or wherever and drop it off and come back, it would be, there'd be quite a bit more traffic on the road just from that one building, so. It just seems like dog walking is kind of coming about.
New industry.
New line of work.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
With the amendment?
With the amendments, as proposed.
Ready?
Yes.
On the motion to approve as amended, Commissioner Cardoza.
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Aye.
Commissioner Flores.
Aye.
Commissioner Jermaine.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey.
Aye.
And Chair Martin.
Aye.
Seven ayes. The amendments are approved. And this decision is appealable to the city council within 15 days.
Congratulations. The next item, public hearing item, is for the third unit application at 1051 45th Street. And Maru, I think that's yours again.
This is a use permit and design review to convert in the first floor of an existing single-family house into a separate dwelling unit. The commission heard this item also at the June meeting of this year and had several concerns regarding the work, livability of the new unit, as well as landscaping treatment, the size of windows. The applicant has made several revisions. But before I go into them, I'll just do a quick overview of what the proposal was. This is on 45th Street. There are existing two single-family homes. The proposal is to create a living unit on the first floor. Right now, there is an existing one-car garage, and the rest of the area is used for laundry and storage purposes. This area is going to, the garage stays, and the rest of the area is going to be converted into a living unit. There is no change in footprint or height of the building. In terms of changes from the last time you saw this plan, they have made, they have changed the floor plan so that it is now one-bedroom unit instead of two-bedroom units. This has also reduced the parking requirement to just one additional parking space. And that space is going to be provided on the eastern side of the property, which is right here. In terms of other changes that he has proposed are enlargement of windows in the bedroom and the living room area, an additional window in the rear of the bedroom. He had earlier proposed relocation of the rear stair, relocation of the front stairs to the rear. That is not going to happen. The rear stairs are going to stay. However, he is changing the front stairs. Earlier, he had proposed it to be steel and concrete. Now, they're going to be straight wood, made of wood stairs, which are right here or here. In terms of landscaping improvements, there was a concern by the commission for showing landscaping improvements in greater detail and for the entire site. What he is proposing to do is, first of all, add shrubs and trees in the front area. One of the trees is going to go right here, creating little landscape areas between the two curb cuts. And the rear, most of the rear of the site is going to be covered with ground cover. As in the previous proposal, he's going to replace the existing driveway, which is completely concrete, and replace that with wheel strips and landscaping. The new driveway is also going to consist of wheel strips and landscaping. But those are basically essentially all the changes that are being proposed. And that's, in terms of, you know, use and density, the addition of the third unit in, on the property is, it's within what's prescribed for the RM zone. The zoning, the parking requirements are also the additional, one additional parking space for the new unit that is also in compliance with the parking requirements. With that, staff at this point is recommending approval for this project. And if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Questions?
I have one question. Did I hear in the, read the report that they used to park a car in the back between the two buildings?
This one right here, here?
There was, was there a parking?
Yes, earlier on, in the earlier version, the proposal was for two-bedroom unit. Two-bedroom unit requires two parking spaces. However, however, he has revised that to a one-bedroom unit, and so that requires only one parking space.
I don't think they ever did park cars back there.
Right.
That was the previous, no.
Before the proposal, that was never used as a parking space.
That is correct.
Right.
Is it, would it be desirable to provide tandem parking along the sideways? Because there's three units there, and there's only two parking spaces provided.
He's not required by code to do that. But if he, I mean, if he wishes to provide additional parking, it is his free will to do or not to do. But right now, he's not proposing more than one parking space.
Is the seven-foot curb cut a standard in Emeryville?
It's not, it's smaller than what is in the code. However, from our point of view, there are going to be two driveways, and we don't want a larger, you know, half the lot as it is is going to be a large curb cut. Seven feet is acceptable with the traffic engineer. And so that, you know, in terms of workability of parking the space, it would be adequate.
I believe that curb cut that's dimensioned as seven feet on the plants is the existing curb cut. So that one is already there. I don't see a dimension for the new curb cut.
No, it appears to be the same scale.
Yes, it does appear to be about the same size.
I just wondered if that was the standard in Emeryville.
I think the standard is 10.
This doesn't cause a problem at seven feet, then?
Well, this was reviewed by the Development Coordinating Committee, and they didn't seem to have a problem with it.
Any other questions, Maru?
Is the replacement tree that's set back a little bit onto the property of equal size to the one that was being removed on the curb?
It's going to be 24-inch box, which is what we normally require for new trees. That's the standard.
Is that tree dying or diseased, that one that's there now?
The one that is being removed? No, that's not dying. It's being removed to accommodate the new driveway.
Yeah, now I see the curb cut.
Maru, I'll ask, as a follow-up, I'll ask this of you, and perhaps the applicant can clarify if you can't. Why are they showing the tree on the property? Why aren't they showing it on the street, the replacement tree?
My understanding is that they don't feel there's enough space on the, on right here. But we can clarify that from the applicant.
Yeah, it seems that there would be enough space, but I would defer to our landscape architect for that. But it would obviously be preferable to replace it on street rather than setting it back from the curb.
I would note that under the city's urban forestry ordinance, street trees that are removed need to be replaced with new street trees, or a replacement fee needs to be paid to the city. If the new tree is on private property, it would not be considered a new street tree. So in addition to planting this tree, they would also have to compensate the city for the cost of a new street tree that wouldn't be put in.
Yeah, that was going to be the end of my comment.
I'd rather have the tree on the street.
I'd rather have the tree too.
Any other questions, Maru? No more questions, and would the applicant like to make a presentation? The applicant's designer?
My name is Jamie Lopez. I'm the designer, the project designer. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity again tonight to be here. I would like to thank also the planning department for recommending the approval of the project. I don't want to make another presentation, so I would be open for questions, if there is any.
Any questions of the applicant's representative?
Why did you put the tree on the property and not leave it on the street?
Okay. One main reason is the space, if you look at the drawing, the space in between the two driveways, it's a bit small, you know, for that tree to be planted back. So we thought of putting it inside the property.
The tree doesn't necessarily have to go back into one of those two planters. It could also become part of the canopy of the other existing tree along that landscaper, landscape buffer there.
Well, he's going to have to reimburse the city to plant another tree.
Yeah, we can also do that, yeah.
Sure. I just, at least two commission members feel that a tree over the money is preferable.
Any other questions of the applicant's designer?
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Concerning the, I really appreciate the, your responsiveness to commissioners' comments at our last meeting. But I do have a question about the stair in the front.
Yes, ma'am.
The building. It would be nicer, I think, and be more in character with the rest of the street if you had solid risers and solid treads. And then maybe, the way I read the drawings now, the stair is open. If you could, you know, provide walls on either side to sort of fill it in so it's more in keeping with the historical architecture of the area, I think that would be preferable. Was there a reason why you left it open?
If I may go back to my first design, it's actually an open-type steel railing. But then when we, I think when I got that comment during the last meeting that we need to do it as a, as a wood-type staircase, I opted to do a closed-wall railing. And then actually, one of my, my option was presented to Ms. Miro at the time, so. But I think she made the comment on why not do it on an open-type.
Oh, okay, so there was a direction from staff?
Out of wood, wood balusters.
You could still put wood risers on the stairway.
It would still be a solid riser and a tread. If I may show this.
Okay, maybe I didn't read the drawing properly here.
No, it doesn't show this.
Something like this.
Uh-huh.
Did you want to make a comment about why?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one. I'm Mrs. Colada. I'm the owner. And I just wanted to, my concern was the safety of the, you know, whoever is going to be living downstairs. If you open the door, nobody can see you. I mean, it's boxed up, and you're standing there, and here's a car in front of your, you know, door. And on the other side, it's all covered. I mean, I mean, I think safety should be considered in this case. I mean, I don't want to be living there if I'm boxed and I open the door and I can't see outside.
Any other questions?
Well, if you had a solid riser, it would look a little more substantial.
Right.
But I think the applicant's point is that you can actually see through the riser spacing in the treads with the open design. You can actually see, from the street, you can see behind the stairway.
But there's nothing behind the stair.
Right, but the person opening the door can then see out to whatever's on the street.
Well, no, because the door isn't under the stairway. It's at the side of the stair.
It's a setback. The door is setback, so. Actually, the way it is shown now, you will still have the main door at the left side. So underneath the staircase is just facing a wall. So unlike the previous design idea, I have this, I have a landing that turns towards the driveway. So that is actually blocking the doorway going to the bottom part. This time, it was done in a straight ply, just like the existing, but only out of wood.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Thank you. We're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I think it looks like a great design for, that's pretty close to my house, and it looks really nice. I appreciate all the ample landscaping.
I have a couple of issues with the landscaping. And one is that what you've shown in the back and all around the house is just one kind of ground cover that gets to be about six inches high, which means that there's really not going to be any usable outdoor space between the two houses. Is that, am I reading your plan correctly, that you're suggesting vinca all over the hall?
For now, I was only suggesting to have one type of a ground cover. But then if the city calls for, you know, another type, you know, we could do it on the final drawing. If there is a need to, you know, to put another species on that.
I think the issue is that if you use that ground cover all over the back, there's going to be no place where anybody can walk, sit, or do anything outside other than the little walkway that goes between the houses, and that's-
And trip.
Yeah.
I mean, vinca is a vine. People, it's fine as a border, but people are going to trip over it. It's supposed to be used for gathering area.
Another issue is you have the parking at the side of the house. You've got a row of plants right where somebody's going to open their driver's door to try to get out. So that's not going to work very well. Need to relook at that. There needs to be someplace where people can open the door and get out of their car. I would also like to see that, I don't want to see the tree moved to the street. I want to see an additional tree put in the street right of way, rather than, I don't want to see that tree taken out of your plan. But I do think there needs to be another one in the-
So there would be two trees, all in a, new, new two trees?
That's what I would suggest. And, you know, I believe that the city's tree ordinance says that if you replace a tree with a smaller tree, you still have a fee for the difference in the value of the two trees. So we just want to make sure that what's being taken out is fairly replaced or compensated.
being taken out is fairly replaced or compensated.
So they would have the same size then?
Optimally, yeah.
The one I'm gonna replace.
Optimally, you'd replace it with the exact same size.
Okay.
Right, but that's, it's too, they're not gonna replace it with an eight-inch diameter tree.
I think the other option is that the replacement trees, if you take a tree out that's eight inches, if you replace it with two four-inch trees, you've also met the condition of the order.
But they both have to be in the public right-of-way. One of them can't be on your property.
Right.
It would really behoove you to read that ordinance, I think, yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I, I think that point about the driveway and the driver getting out could probably be resolved by moving the driveway closer to the house.
Closer to?
To the house? Then the passenger can't get in.
Yeah. Well, there's twelve feet. No, there isn't because of the fireplace.
Right.
It's ten feet, so it's gonna be difficult under any scenario.
Right.
You have something like, uh, about ten feet clear from the fence to the, to the face of the, uh,
Fireplace.
The chimney or the fireplace.
Well, maybe that's, is there a fence there? No?
Yeah, there is.
But in, in any, in any version of this, you need to have some kind of walkable planted surface outside of the wheel strips, so that when people get out of their car, they don't trip, you don't have a liability problem, and that they can get out and walk around.
Yeah, we have a cement right, right now. I mean, we can still put cement, so-
No, we wanna see planting in between the wheel strips, but wanna be able-
Yeah, in between, he's gonna do it. I think he has.
Yeah, he has it.
Yeah, he said wheel strips, and, but on the side, we can also have a walkway where, you know, the person who lives in the back can just use that walk back there too.
What they're saying is this.
You already have it.
To have this pave, see. So as soon as they get out of the-
Any other questions or comments?
Commissioner Donaldson, could you clarify what you wanted to see in terms of landscaping between the two houses?
I, I think there needs to be a revised plan that shows either some kind of permeable area where people could walk and sit, or some kind of turf planting. Um, I noticed the plan isn't showing any irrigation along the sides of the back either, so that needs to be looked at again. But, um, it, it just should be usable space.
We plant the grass instead of?
Yeah, absolutely.
We can leave the grass, you know, we can leave the grass.
We can put the grass in.
Yeah, I think those are-
That's fine. That's better than what's being shown here.
Right. Uh, I think that's detail that you'll work with the planning director on, getting that final approval and landscape plan.
Yes.
Um, any other comments? It's the only comment, I've seen no other comments. The comment I, or semi-question, but comment I had was, the frontage, uh, between the sidewalk and the curb says existing landscaping. You don't intend to do any, right now, the plans show no landscaping in that area, including the new curb area. Is that correct? Or do you intend to landscape the strip?
There are a couple bushes on the, on the left side. There's a rose.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Other bushes.
Speak into the microphone.
There are roses on the left side, and there's a, there's a big bush which is rounded on, around on one steps. On the other side, there's a bush. I mean, if you want us to move those bushes, we will. But it looks nice when you go upstairs, and they're bushes, you know, equal looking.
So the whole frontage between the sidewalk and the curb is already landscaped? My point is there's, is it possible to landscape the space between the sidewalk and the curb as well as part of your improvements?
If there's any room here, sure.
Okay. Are there any other comments before we have a motion? And do we need to actually make it some revision to the conditions to identify an additional tree within the street right-of-way?
Um, wouldn't hurt.
Do you wanna suggest where that language would be?
Just a condition that they comply with the street, with the tree ordinance.
It is in there already, but they have options to achieve that. They could either pay a fee, or they could actually provide an additional tree beyond what they're showing right now. And I think what I heard is a preference to have a tree within the street right-of-way.
Well, the way the condition is written right now, it says the applicant shall replace the tree in accordance with the urban forestry ordinance. Um, we could beef that language up and say, replace the tree, uh, with a new tree or trees in the public right-of-way.
Then we don't wanna lose this tree in the front yard, either.
Well, that's already in the plans, so you're, and the plans are referenced in the conditions.
But they refer to it as a replacement tree.
Oh, okay. Say, in addition to the, in addition to any new trees on the property, there shall be replacement tree or trees in the right-of-way?
If you, if you believe that they can plant enough trees to meet the intent of the ordinance within the right-of-way.
Well, or pay, or pay the required fee, but I think we wanna see at least one new tree in the right-of-way.
Yes.
With that clarification, do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
So, motion by Commissioner Jeffrey and second by Jermaine.
And all the other comments on the landscaping are understood. We will handle that at a staff level.
And we are seeing this with a front stair that has closed risers. Is that correct?
That's in the conditions.
Yeah.
Okay, ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Cardoza.
Aye.
Commissioner Flores.
Aye.
Commissioner Jermaine.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey.
Aye.
Vice Chair Donaldson.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Seven ayes. The application is approved.
Thank you.
The decision is appealable to the city council within fifteen days.
Much better design.
Absolutely.